Bien, ahora vamos a continuar con el pleno. Pero antes de empezar, tenemos la noticia del pleno público. Ya lo mencioné antes, pero si no me escucharon o si solo vinieron, hay una copia aquí. Hemos hecho suficientes copias para todos. Si no las tienen, pueden venir y obtenerlas en este momento. Es porque es una lectura muy larga y extensa de la noticia del pleno público. Entonces, en lugar de leerlo, tener a nuestro fiscal local, Anthony Bofford, leer toda la noticia, probablemente tomará 20 minutos. No que no seas un experto, pero hay mucho involucrado, hay muchos temas. Así que, si nadie se preocupa, y creo que el board está de acuerdo, vamos a dejar la lectura del pleno público. Parece que todos han recibido la noticia del pleno público o se han firmado. Bien, aquí es como... ¿Cuántas personas tenemos aquí? Bueno, déjame pasar por aquí algunas de las reglas fundamentales para el pleno público. El pleno público es para que podamos escucharles. Eso es de lo que se trata. No, estás bien, Johnny. El pleno público es para recibir tus comentarios, ¿de acuerdo? Queremos escucharlos, ¿de acuerdo? Y tus comentarios son valiosos, ¿de acuerdo? Solo quiero que sepan eso. Vamos a tomar todo lo que dices esta noche, vamos a tomar eso como consejo, vamos a escucharlos, ¿de acuerdo? Esta ley de zonaje, aún no hemos votado en esto todavía. No ha sido aprobada por el board. Se está sujetando a cambios. Lo que eso significa es que después de esta noche, después de que todos ustedes vengan o quien sea que venga a hablar, definitivamente tomaremos lo que tienes que decir en consideración antes de volver a salir y actuar sobre esta ley. No vamos a seguir adelante y hacer esto, pero voy a escucharlos primero. Estoy feliz, realmente feliz de que todos estéis aquí. Lo estoy, ¿de acuerdo? Porque nunca vemos esto. Así que estoy feliz de que la Cámara de Comercio esté bien representada aquí. Mike Ucci, gracias por traer a sus tribus aquí. Realmente, lo entiendo, ¿de acuerdo? Es importante.
Bueno, ¿tenemos la oportunidad de responder después de esta reunión, cuando ustedes van y tomen lo que decimos en consideración y vuelvan? ¿Todavía tendremos la oportunidad de hacer el pleno público?
Sí, aquí es lo que va a pasar. Probablemente dejaremos este pleno público abierto. No vamos a cerrarlo esta noche. Pero si hacemos cambios en esto, en la ley propuesta, si el board hace cambios en ella, por ley tenemos que tener otro pleno público para los cambios en la ley, ¿de acuerdo? Así que, en cualquier forma, si es suficiente, tenemos que tener otro pleno público. Así que tu respuesta es sí, vamos a dejarlo abierto y usted puede comentar sobre él en algún momento. Cuando volvamos esto a tomar más acción sobre la aménica, ¿de acuerdo? Sí, también aceptaremos las submisiones escritas también. No tienen que estar aquí para hablar con el board. Pueden enviar algo escrito al board y lo leeremos y lo tomarán como consejo.
La única cosa que quisiera agregar a lo que acabas de decir, para apoyarte, y también, las redes sociales están aquí. Muchos de tus comentarios ya he visto en Facebook. Estoy de acuerdo con ellos, como dije, los agradezco. Lo mejor que podría pedir es, esto es un pleno público y esto es verdaderamente un diálogo. Y cuando Kenny dijo que esto no era solo un descubrimiento, solo quiero señalar dos ejemplos. Porque un par de personas en Facebook dijeron que esto es todo, que esto es solo una formalidad. Teníamos un cambio en el código de la llave. Quiero decir, tres años después de eso. Creo que fueron tres o cuatro plenos públicos. Y la entrada del público ayudó a cambiar y modificarla. Así que esto no es solo un descubrimiento, podemos adaptarlo, lo haremos. Queríamos trabajar sobre portapartys alrededor de la playa. Y eso sigue abierto porque los contratistas vinieron y dijeron, hey, estás pensando en portapartys alrededor de la playa, pero eso afectará si hago un trabajo en la casa de alguien. Así que eso sigue abierto y estamos tratando de modificar eso. Así que mi punto es, esto no es un descubrimiento. Queremos tu información y por favor hagámoslo un diálogo. Ayúdanos a ayudarte y hagámoslo un diálogo y simplemente hagamos una buena conversación. Y habrá pros y contras. Vamos a estar de acuerdo en las divergencias y aprender cosas. Te diré algo, acabo de preguntarle a Michael Anas, esto. aprendí algo en Facebook y estaba en el board de zonaje, no recuerdo. Y es una de las tiendas de barba allí. No me di cuenta de que no podía poner una tienda de barba allí porque esa es una de tus banderas. Y podrías ir y obtener una variante para eso, decir que hay dos banderas, que es una pequeña cosa. Pero no lo sabía. Y aunque estaba en el board de zonaje y en el board de la ciudad. Así que, todos van a ser educados esta noche, espero que lo sean. Y simplemente hagamos un diálogo, aprendamos información. Me disculparé si sintieras molesto que no te hubiéramos dado. Voy a tomar la responsabilidad personalmente. Y te preguntaré esto, si miras a todos en la sala, no puedo personalmente ir a todos ustedes, pero en el sitio web está mi número de teléfono celular, mi dirección de correo electrónico. Es mucho más fácil si me llegan los masajes. Y no estoy diciendo que voy a sentarme y no haga nada. Vais a venir como individuos, pero si ustedes alguna vez tienen un problema, todos nuestros teléfonos y todos nuestros correos electrónicos. Respondo a ellos, llamo a la gente, así que por favor, esto no es una calle sin salida. Por favor, ayúdenos, ayuden a ustedes y hagamos un diálogo. Si están molestos con algo, llamadnos. Así que eso es todo lo que quería decir, solo para poner las cosas a la luz. Este es un pleno público y podemos cambiar cosas.
Y si por casualidad no puedes llegar a uno de los miembros del board de la ciudad, estoy aquí todo el día, tengo una política de puerta abierta. He tenido una desde que he empezado aquí. He tenido a mucha gente que viene a verme durante el día, muchas personas felices y muchas personas enojadas. Pero me divino a todos. Y si me llamas, vas a recibir una llamada telefónica. Así que eso es una manera de comunicarse. Necesitamos hacerlo mejor, necesitamos hacer un trabajo mejor en eso. Necesitamos hacer un trabajo mejor en comunicarnos contigo. Y si puedes también comunicarte con nosotros en asuntos que están relacionados con ti o tu negocio o la comunidad. Todos tenemos un interés interesante en esta comunidad. Todos vivimos, trabajamos, criamos nuestras familias aquí. Y tú tienes un interés mayor. Tienes negocios que estás operando en esta comunidad. Somos amistosos con el negocio. Queremos que florezcas. Queremos que tus negocios sean exitosos. Así que trabajaremos con ustedes, pero solo pregúntese si trabajan con nosotros, ¿de acuerdo? Creo que si hacemos eso y trabajamos juntos, colectivamente, podemos hacer más y lograr mucho más que intentar hacerlo solo. Eso es todo lo que quiero decir. Vamos a ser respetuosos esta noche, respetemos las opiniones de los demás. Pueden variar, no estoy seguro, pero hagámoslo, ¿de acuerdo? Así que, vamos a empezar. Así que vamos a dejar la lectura del pleno público porque, como dije, es larga. Y, ¿el board, está de acuerdo con eso? Está de acuerdo con la lectura, ¿de acuerdo? Todos tienen una copia, quien sea que venga a obtenerla. Así que necesito una motion para abrir el pleno público. Bien, una motion por el fiscal Lomardi, segunda por el fiscal Lubanacci. Todos en favor. Bien, ustedes tienen la lista aquí. Bien, el primer orador para el pleno público esta noche es Mike Morelli.
Bueno, una vez más. Soy un miembro de la Cámara de Comercio de 1973. Me uní en el movimiento. La mejor lección que he aprendido de la Cámara, que le guardo hasta el día de hoy, fue enseñada a mí por un hombre llamado William Spain. Y aprendí eso cada sábado por las 6:00 en la mañana, 6:30 en la mañana cuando él estaba afuera limpiando los bordes. Antes de eso, había mucha entrada con el board de la ciudad y no la veo ahora. El memo que salió, me ofendí con algunas de las cosas, fue un poco aterrador. Y es realmente genial ver a todas estas personas aquí. Realmente, realmente, realmente es. Pero, los hechos están ahí, esto ha sido una discusión abierta durante dos o tres años. Y nadie ha venido a esta reunión. Nadie pone a este board como yo pongo a este board. Y estoy pidiendo ayuda aquí, es lo que estoy haciendo. En realidad creo que es el mejor board coherente que he visto en 20 años y medio. Hay definitivamente una diferencia. Hay definitivamente una diferencia en la ciudad. Jen Morris es probablemente la única que he visto venir con cosas de la Cámara y ideas para la ciudad. Y, usted sabe, solo tiene que haber más gente aquí. Había un comité de compliance de ruta 6, que fue despejado hace tres o cuatro años. Había tres miembros de la Cámara allí. Y hicimos cosas buenas para la comunidad. Yo también estaba en el board, personas de negocios. Nadie puede decir que la maya pack no se ve mejor que cuando fue cinco años atrás. Nadie puede decir eso. Y es de ese board y los trabajadores de este board de la ciudad los que lo lograron. El 90% de los propietarios de negocios y propiedades siguen la ley. Es el 10% que no. Tal vez incluso menos. Pero esos 10% realmente puso un brillo en el 90% que está tratando. Y creo que los plenos públicos intentan mejorar la ruta 6 de nuevo y ayudar a bajar estas escaleras de compliance. Es solo un pleno público. Y quiero terminar con una cosa muy divertida porque estaba en la ciudad los últimos días. Y mi hija, mi hija más joven, ha estado en la maya pack durante unos siete años, asistiendo a escuelas. Y anoche nos fuimos a la maya pack a las 7:00. Y ella hace un comentario, pasamos a un edificio en particular. Y ella hace un comentario, dice, ¿quién es ese edificio? Y yo solo me levanto y ella dice, no sé. Y, perdón, esta es una cita. Dice, realmente se ve mal. Y empecé a reírme. Y ella dice, ¿por qué estás riendo? Y yo digo, bueno, esto es lo que se trata mañana por la noche. Y luego la mostré a las noticias de la maya pack que tenía en mi cintura trasera. Y digo, su comentario fue la imagen de las banderas que usaron en su artículo sobre esta reunión. Así que, de la boca de los niños, pero los niños son el futuro de esta comunidad. Y ninguno de nosotros va a ningún lado. Todos tenemos que trabajar juntos. Tenemos que arreglar, todos compartimos las mismas preocupaciones. Somos una comunidad. No hay línea de división en ello. Y realmente me encantaría conducir por ruta 6 un día y que mi hija diga, hombre, todo se ve realmente bien. Pero, quería compartir y no ofendí a nadie con esa remarca, pero ella tenía razón. Se ve mal. Y eso es lo que estamos tratando de arreglar. Gracias.
Bien, el siguiente orador es Ken Lorham.
En realidad, Mike dijo algo que no estaba aquí para abordar, pero antes de hablar de lo que quería decir, Mike entró en la ley de compliance de la propiedad. Creo que eso es lo que estaban hablando.
De la ruta 6 de compliance.
Sí. Y para mí, creo que es totalmente disgustoso. Y todavía quiero que alguien me diga cómo esta ciudad dio un permiso de minería al tipo que cruzó D'Agostino, que durante cuatro años mineró esa propiedad en solo grano y piedra. Y ahora tenemos un gran cráter en la ruta 6. Quiero decir, cosas como esa me hacen loco cuando vas a enviar a alguien para sacar la bandera de alguien tratando de mantener la puerta abierta, pero tenemos... Y tenemos eso en un extremo de la ciudad, luego si vamos al otro extremo de la ciudad, al lado de los toros, había un centro de strip que tenía agujeros en el arco. Ha sido condenado probablemente durante seis o siete años. Y todavía hay un billboard hecho en casa, pintado en azul, que dice, "Abertura en 2012". Ahora, ha habido una aplicación selectiva de la ley contra mí, con tres violaciones, como cada vez que hice algo, lo cual no debería haberse hecho porque estaba en la zona de exhibición, eso nunca se hizo una violación. Totalmente ridículo, irresponsable, gobierno. Y tengo que culpar a ustedes porque ustedes contrataron a este tipo como un fiscal de código, un fiscal de código partidario. Y todo lo que hizo fue irritar a todos en esta habitación. No tenía motivo o razón para lo que estaba haciendo. Me confrontó un día en la plaza de la ciudad. Y le dije, creo que cometió un error porque no tengo una bandera ilegal. Estoy en una zona de exhibición, ha sido una zona de exhibición durante los últimos cien años. Es arbitrario y caprichoso, no hablaba de ello. Todo lo que sé es que empiezo a recibir violaciones. Bueno, me costó más de $6,000 en caras de abogados para ganar mi caso, lo que es por lo que ahora estamos abordando. Espero que tengan una buena ordenanza que todos debemos vivir. Solo para que sepan, mi caso salió con el tapo del tribunal diciendo que la ordenanza de la bandera actual es incerta, vacía, susceptible a la arbitración, arbitrares, aplicación selectiva de la ley. Ese fue mi caso, fue una aplicación selectiva de la ley. Por cualquier razón, eligió a mí para salir loco con las violaciones. Y para llegar a mí, tomé fotos que envié al tribunal. Él tenía 50 banderas ilegales con ninguna violación. Ahora, no creo que necesitemos un fiscal de código partidario. Creo que debería ir a la oficina de Mike y tal vez Mike necesite a otro tipo de trabajo partidario. Pero si conseguimos una ley que sea feasible y algo que la comunidad de negocios pueda vivir, que ustedes puedan vivir, probablemente ni siquiera necesiten un fiscal de código. Pero simplemente ir a hacer negocios en la ruta 6 que están un día lejos de cerrar porque no tienen visibilidad, las autos van a 50 millas por hora. Y decir que no necesitamos banderas neón, quiero decir, otra vez, eso es algo que podemos resolver porque necesitas una bandera neón. Sé que estoy 24/7 en la ciudad, he estado en la ciudad 45 años. Y cuando conduzco por la ruta 6 y no veo una bandera abierta, no me acerco a esa zona. Podría quedarme aquí ahora y resumir lo que hablamos en la reunión de la Cámara esta noche. Y solo me tomaría tres horas. Creo que si solo podemos estar de acuerdo, y ese era un buen punto para hacer, dejarlo abierto. Pero si podemos conseguir un board, lo que haremos es reunir la Cámara para reunirse con ustedes. Y vamos a pasar de elemento a elemento. Estoy seguro de que podemos ser un pleno feliz. Porque queremos que la ciudad se vea bien también, porque si no se ve bien para nosotros, no vamos a tener negocios. Pero si lo hacen donde tenemos las banderas. Si ustedes están de acuerdo en hacer eso, no creo que haya mucha gente que quiera hablar esta noche. Vamos a tener estas reuniones primero, luego un pleno público.
Solo para hacer la pregunta. Siete, ocho años atrás, en realidad, senté en el board de la Cámara. Y senté en la silla del asesor político. Y estaba en las reuniones y miraba las agendas. Y no sé si hay alguien en la Cámara que se sienta en esa posición. Pero, así como dijo John antes, voy a tomar la responsabilidad de esta noche porque ha habido falta de comunicación. Usábamos el comité, usábamos el asesor político.
No, les dije a futuro, seré honesto, les dije a Mike. No he estado en una reunión de la Cámara en mucho tiempo. Y estoy en la Cámara. Soy el presidente de la Cámara. Fui presidente en 1982, cuando Tom La Triciano y personas como ésa estaban allí. Y fuimos proactivos. Fuimos a las reuniones del board de planificación, del board de la ciudad. Si encontramos a un candidato particular que era anti-negocios, poníamos a ese candidato en contra. Eso es lo que tenemos que empezar a hacer de nuevo. Porque nuestros negocios están heridos. Y si cerramos nuestros negocios, ese impuesto de impuestos va a seguir siendo el dueño de la casa porque no recibimos servicios del pueblo. No usamos las escuelas, pagamos por nuestra propia basura. Así que el dinero de los negocios comerciales y las propiedades comerciales que pagan es un regalo para los residentes. No quieres herirlos. Tenemos, diría, ¿cuánto dices, 25% de vacantes en la ruta 6 ahora mismo? Al menos, ¿20% de vacantes? Si alguna vez quitamos banderas, neón, y no estoy diciendo que todos ellos sean buenos. Los pequeños... Solo quiero asegurarme de que se presten atención. Todo esto puede controlarse. Quiero decir, tomé un viaje el sábado sabiendo que iba a esta reunión y fui a Duchess. Estoy en Westchester todos los días, así que sé lo que es Westchester. Y tomé un viaje de Duchess porque en realidad creo que la ruta 9 en Duchess es increíble. Es un marco increíble para los negocios comerciales. Están prosperando, están construyendo más edificios. Cada propiedad, iba a empezar a tomar fotos, pero estaba lento, estaba muy temprano. Pero cada propiedad tenía banderas, neón, banderas, banderas de atrás, esas pequeñas banderas frente a sus negocios. Están haciendo mucho negocio. No somos el mismo modo que ellos. No tenemos ese tipo de exposición, ese tipo de tráfico. Y lo necesitamos, pero otra vez, creo que podemos sentarnos y resolver todo esto. Ninguno de nosotros quiere ver una bandera neón que es toda la ventana que va, di, 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 di. No, no queremos ver eso. Abriere, cierra, no es un problema con una tienda de barba, un nail place, un salon de cabello, algunos de los pequeños delicatessen, todo eso. Pero puede ser hecho de manera agradable. Estoy de acuerdo con todo eso, pero necesitamos sentarnos. Estamos contentos de poner un board juntos, tener un diálogo inteligente con ustedes. Y luego la próxima vez que todos vengamos aquí para discutir y votar como un pleno público, creo que va a hacer mucho sentido. Ustedes van a verse bien y sentirse mejor. Y vamos a sentirnos mejor porque sabemos que podemos mantener nuestras puertas abiertas otro día.
Bien, el siguiente orador es Pat O'Malley. Bienvenido.
No soy tan fluido como Mike y Kenny, así que voy a leer un poquito de la letra aquí. Mi nombre es Pat O'Malley y he sido residente durante más de 40 años. Esta noche estoy aquí como el presidente del comité de la Cámara del norte de Westchester, Putnam, St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee para expresar la gran preocupación y desaprobación del cambio de ley local de la sección 156.10. Saben a qué me refiero. Específicamente la sección 11 sobre banderas promocionales temporales. Pediríamos a la Cámara de la ciudad que considerara la siguiente. La mayoría de las banderas temporales que se ponen en nuestra ciudad para organizaciones no lucrativas como las nuestras, la St. Patrick's Day Parade, la Relay for Life, la Columbus State Parade. Estos eventos son dirigidos por residentes locales que involucran un gran número de tiempo y energía para organizar y ejecutar estos eventos de la comunidad. Eventos que brillan una luz favorable a nuestra ciudad y a la fuerza de la comunidad que todos estamos orgullosos de. El comité de la St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee ha estado en este paro en la calle durante los últimos 38 años con el solidaridad de nuestros funcionarios de la ciudad, los negocios locales y la comunidad en general. Iniciar cobrando un costo de 1,500, un costo realmente exorbitante, poner una bandera para aconsejar al público de este evento de la comunidad solo añade otra expensión, una enorme, al coste total de poner la parada en la calle. Todo lo cual es pagado por donaciones. Entendemos que sus tribunales asociados van a tener el departamento de la carretera de la ciudad poner la bandera. Sin embargo, por favor, mantengan en cuenta el ingreso generado por miles de participantes de paradas y espectadores que vienen a nuestra ciudad para participar en la celebración. Gastan dinero generando negocios así como ingreso de impuestos de ventas. También un costo de 1,500 parece extremadamente excesivo, como si pocos no les gustan las banderas en general y tratan de bajarlas. En cuanto a los cambios proposados para las banderas de negocios que gobernaban, escribí en un periódico que algunos del board de la ciudad les gustarían estas cambios para darle a la ciudad, "una pequeña ciudad de Nueva England". Si esa es verdaderamente la visión del board de la ciudad, siento que lamentablemente están en el marco. Hemos superado eso. Un ejemplo de esto es evidente por la biblioteca de la maya pack, una fantástica instalación y proveedor de servicio así como el departamento de la fire de la maya pack, otra fantástica instalación, ambos proporcionando servicios necesitados. Ambos de estos edificios presidenciales reemplazaron estructuras formales que eran inadecuadas para el cierre de las necesidades de la comunidad creciente. No estamos en una ciudad más dormida. Si el board es de la ayuda plena y la dirección de la fortaleza que nos da el crecimiento, necesita reconocer nuestra ciudad por lo que es y empezar a trabajar con la comunidad de negocios y la comunidad en general para determinar lo que necesita para el futuro. No creo que ninguno de nosotros quiera que se vea como la ciudad de New York o la Strip de Vegas. Pero tales regulaciones restrictivas de banderas de negocios como las proposadas actualmente están benefician a nadie en nuestra comunidad, al menos los contribuyentes, sus intereses más cercanos han pedido que represente el board. Como tal, el comité de la St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee tiene el board de la ciudad para no aprobar los cambios propuestos. Gracias por su tiempo.
Gracias, Pat. El siguiente orador es Tracy DiMarco. Tracy.
Gracias, estoy un poco avergonzada de lo que me gustaría hablar después de escuchar a todos estos tipos muy inteligentes. Estoy aquí bajo, lo siento, tengo que poner mis gafas. Estoy aquí bajo la sección 196. He vivido en esta ciudad durante seis años. Nunca he estado en una reunión aquí y me encantará volver. Esto es muy fascinante. Me gustaría tomar un minuto para centrar su atención en el número siete.
Perdón.
Sí.
¿Dijiste 196 o 195?
Sí, sí.
196.
Sección 1, ¿de acuerdo? Capítulo 96, número siete.
No, lo siento, eso es en realidad el siguiente.
Lo siento, cuando entré aquí, estaba aquí muy temprano y me dijeron que iba a poner aquí.
Usted será la primera persona para el próximo.
Lo harán.
Está bien, gracias.
Bien, el siguiente orador es Matt Bevelacca.
El más viejo de la ciudad, por cierto. Hola, Matt Bevelacca. Estoy aquí y estoy pensando, cuando fui presidente de la Cámara en los años 80, tuve que hacer un discurso frente al tema, que no recuerdo cuál era el tema, pero recuerdo que el superbozo era Dean Bauer. Y me levanté y en mi trilogía estaba mencionando la palabra maya pack. Y había una mujer, una mujer vieja, y probablemente a la edad en que estaba entonces, y ella dijo, perdón, perdón, este joven está diciendo maya pack, esto no es maya pack, esto es mahoa pack, ¿de acuerdo? Y continuamos. El resultado final fue que me volteé a la audiencia y a esta mujer y dije, en todo respeto, señora, no es como pronuncias el nombre, es lo que haces para la ciudad que realmente cuenta. Y también me recuerda al primer encuentro que fui cuando llegué aquí, estoy aquí como 51 años. Y fui al primer encuentro como presidente de la asociación en Friendly Road. Y me dijeron, vaya allí, yo venía de la Bronx, y dijeron, vaya allí y vea lo que dicen y vuelva y reporte a nosotros. Y recuerdo al chico, su nombre era Joe Bolt. Y se levantó en su dialogo alemán diciendo, lo que necesitamos en esta ciudad es la industria. No podemos pagar nuestros impuestos si no tenemos industria. Y eso fue hace 51 años. Y siento que estamos diciendo lo mismo hoy que hicimos hace más de 50 años. Y mirando esto, no tenía demasiado tiempo para leer, pero mirando esto, no son solo las banderas que hay en este código que estamos preocupados por. Es un firmamento, son nuevos negocios que quieren venir, quieren ver esta ordenanza y decir, ¿esta es la ciudad con la que realmente quiero hacer negocios? Porque es tan restrictivo. Una palabra que no ha sido mencionada esta noche y todas las discusiones que había antes de mí, sobre la ciudad y John Lubanacci había mencionado antes sobre la policía, no escuché la palabra compromiso. Y me parece que nadie está tratando de comprometerse en alguno de estos temas. Y, usted sabe, a menos que lo hagamos, no vamos a llegar a ningún lugar. Así que, en línea con lo que está pasando con esta ordenanza, espero que podamos comprometerse, podamos pensar en cualquier industria que quiera ver esta ordenanza y decir, ¿este es el lugar donde quiero hacer negocios? Y ayudando a los negocios que están tratando de hacerlo hoy. Gracias.
El siguiente orador es Carl Abanov.
Carl Abanov, miembro de la Cámara, probablemente cerca de 40 años, y propietario de negocios en la ruta 6 de la maya pack hace 38 años, 35 es lo que es. La base es, sé que el board de la ciudad tiene buenas intenciones y tenemos que prestar atención a la estética de la ciudad, sin embargo, creo que este código propuesto no va a funcionar. Creo que da daño a los negocios. Antes de empezar a hacer cambios como este, una cosa que necesitamos, que estaba faltando con la ARB y muchas de las leyes que hemos pasado, es un plan real y una especie de visión conceptual de cómo queremos que la ciudad se vea en 20 o 30 años. Si no tenemos eso primero, no sabemos dónde vamos. Solo estamos pasando leyes y haciendo cosas que son reparaciones temporales. Hicimos los basureros. Y, francamente, creo que algunos son muy malos, estas cajas y contenedores que tenemos, donde antes teníamos un pequeño basurero que podía haberse ocultado. No creo que realmente estemos pensando en ello. Una vez que tienes un plan y tienes una dirección hacia la que vas y sabes lo que quieres ver durante muchos años y hacia el futuro, entonces puedes hacer ciertos cambios que funcionarán bien con eso. Por ejemplo, una persona quiere reemplazar una bandera. Si su nueva bandera es una propuesta que es conducente al plan, usted dice, usted sabe qué, no hay costo. Vamos a levantar el costo porque estamos tratando de ir en una cierta dirección. Tratando de venir con algunas ideas creativas para animar a la gente a cumplir con un plan que todos pensamos que se verá bien. Ahora mismo, la forma en que está escrito aquí, solo pone a la gente. Kenny mencionó la aplicación de código y cosas. I mean, I've been there for years. I've gotten several messages about my dumpster, which was tiny and hidden in a parking lot. We've recently had fire inspection fees, which were like $700. It seems like there's a lot of things that are hindering the businesses in town. And again, before you make changes, have a concept, have a plan, and then you really have something to work with and you could slowly tweak it into the future and make it work. And, you know, try to help the business owners. Again, you're gonna replace your sign and you're gonna put something that we want to see? The fees reduced, the fees waived, because this is what we want to see in the town in the future. So just keep that in mind. I think you should take it easy with this new board. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Mike Gucci.
My name is Mike Gucci and I represent the business community here at Maye Pack and Carmel, as well as a few other folks there here. And thank you to the county chamber, the county chairman as well, as well as the Putnam County Chambers of Commerce. Because there's television cameras on us and all, and you mentioned that you would take written suggestions, I'd like to, my wife's gonna hate me for this, I'd like to give out my work email, not my cellphone. So my email, if you'd like to, so that I could forward this information on, is mike@maypeccarmelchamber.com. So now you have my email if you want to send a written suggestion, if you don't feel like you can get it all out in words, I'd be more than happy to take your email, unformatted, and forward it along to our town board. Okay? Great. I was prepared to go line by line with a lot of things that the small business community has engulfed me with in the last couple of weeks, but I'm not gonna do that tonight because of, I understand your commitment to continue this meeting, not close it tonight because it's just a public hearing, which I'm very excited about. I was prepared to, to offer a very, very differing opinion on a lot of the things that you've reported, such as backlit signs, neon signs. I mean, I've driven like Kenny up and down Route 6 and I've looked at businesses' storefronts and I've, and I've started to do the math, and I started to use that as like ten percent of the window space, or twenty percent of the window space. Forget about the backlit sign stuff because it's just, we just, the business community doesn't see that as really plausible at this point. The restrictions on some of this stuff, I'm not gonna get into. We think that there, we need to revisit this, so we're happy we're gonna keep this open. John, you mentioned, Mr. Lubinacci, you mentioned physical stress. I'm happy you said that, because I was looking for material and you gave me some, so thank you. You're a good listener. We just got out of the biggest recession we've ever been in, in the entire history of America since the depression. We're finally making it through. I think, I think a lot of businesses, you see restaurants opening, we're finally making it through one of the biggest recessions of all time. We, this is not the time to start to create new recessionable, I'm sorry, new regulations without a plan. I couldn't have possibly said it better than Mr. Albano. I put that in some correspondence publicly. I've praised you guys for trying. It's a good start. And now we need to, because there's a lot of parts in this proposed change, in the zoning changes, especially the beginning part, which are good, which are gonna increase the value of commercial properties and businesses, and the other stuff we need to work on together. So if I understand this correct, what you're saying is, you're gonna keep the meeting open and then we can form a committee together where we can meet with one or two, because you can't have more than that, where we meet together, we talk about stuff together, what we kinda want, and you guys go back. Now you're gonna have another public hearing. If we go to that and there's still stuff we want to change, you can do it again. Okay? Just so everybody hears that kind of process, what's going on, because I want to make sure all you folks are clear, we run businesses. So, I mean, I took it on the chin, I had a conversation with Mike, really changed my life, because he said, you know, you, well, not my life, he changed my week. He said, I'm giving that much credit. He said, he said, you know, I was, I was, I was beating on my friend Josh Schneider because I'm friends with him. I'm surprised John didn't tell me about this, so to speak, you know? And Mike says, "Shame on you, they have a meeting every Wednesday, you should have been there." They've been talking about this for two weeks. Now I'm not gonna say that to all us folks, because we have businesses to run, but they invited us here to talk about this stuff today and we need to take advantage of that. And I'm talking to them and I'm not trying to rara them, but you guys said, "Please start to come to this stuff." We all run businesses. The Chamber of Commerce is definitely, our great chairman of the board, Vincent Ambrosio, is here. We are gonna put together another legislative committee, like you said, to increase the conversation so that it's back and forth, because we want to represent you and they represent you. So, in closing, I just want to say, twenty more minutes of stuff. We have forty, four hundred members in our organization, about sixty-five percent of them are in Maye Pack and Carmel. It's about two hundred and sixty-five for those folks that can't do that thing. They want to give input, but they can't come to this stuff all the time. So we're definitely gonna help them and thank you very much for saying you're gonna keep the meeting open in that regard. We look forward to what Jen Moore has been saying for two years, which is putting together a study. Well, I've only been around for, oh, no, I'm just kidding. Putting together a study, helping you come up with some plan of what a study would look like, what we want, so there's a real plan that all this comes from, instead of being band-aid after band-aid. I'm not saying that they are, but what Carl said might be right. These might be temporary fixes, it's something that we have a vision for twenty, thirty years, what we can have this place look like. I'll finish with this. I don't want to call them sandwich boards anymore because my family owns a deli and it's kind of weird. We're gonna call them A-frames because that's what they are. And A-frames are two feet, two feet wide by three foot tall signs, two by three. Those signs, if placed the right way and made professionally, if I'm driving at fifty miles an hour on Route 6, past the deli, I'm not going in there that day for a $1.99 egg sandwich with a cup of coffee. Shameless plug for the deli. But I'm not gonna stop that day, but the next day I might stop. The day after that I might stop. It's, we can't advertise in the newspaper every week, fellas and ladies, we just can't do it. So what we're asking is to, please, instead of going from eighty miles an hour to zero miles an hour, we compromise with some type of professional signage that we can all agree on, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't hurt the aesthetics of the town, right or wrong, folks? But, but actually promotes business and gets people to stop. Maybe not today because they're driving too fast, which is another topic altogether, but the next day, or the next day, or the next day. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much. We look forward to having a continued conversation and thank you, everybody.
Okay, next is Jen Moore.
Good evening, you guys. Jennifer Marr, chairman of the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, former chair of the Maye Pack Carmel Chamber of Commerce, business owner on Route 6, Maye Pack, that's how I say it, Matt, and actually friends of a lot of the business owners in the room. So I'm just gonna paraphrase shortly, briefly, from an article that I wrote in the Putnam County area. So the town of Carmel is looking to enact a new sign ordinance, which is potentially, which potentially threatens efforts to improve the local economy and may hamper the conducting of business in the area. While in theory, a sign ordinance is a good idea, it should be done in conjunction with a larger vision and plan for the commerce districts. I always get nervous, it's really weird. People think I don't, but I do.
Want to wrap the whole tape in?
Yes. Come on camera. The chambers, business owners, and residents of the community have been asking for revitalization for a long time, and a sign ordinance at this stage of the game, in my opinion, and the opinion of our chamber, could be counterproductive to the overall business climate. Obviously, nobody wants to have signs thrown all over the place. So some of the issues that I think would come before a sign ordinance are the things that we have been in conversation with the town board for a long time. We have vacancy rate issues, we have parking issues, we have traffic flow issues, we do not have pedestrian-friendly downtown commerce districts that exist. There's an air of that there's selective enforcement in place, so if, and I'm very confident that you guys will take the input of the business community, and when you do, and you do come up with some sort of sign ordinance that is business-friendly, I think you have to go all the way and enforce it. We can't have pre-existing non-conforming, and that is difficult for businesses that have their existing signs. But another thing that the Putnam County Chamber brought forth to the board, which we never even got to discuss, was the opportunity to go after money. This town board did not go after any CFA funding. There's money out there for the business community, so that businesses that are already, that already exist could afford to adopt a new sign ordinance. I'm very happy to see a room full of people. Oftentimes, it's me, Mike Corelli, Dave Nicholas, and a couple other people. So, but my, my other points, you guys, this has been an open conversation. You know, there was, I mean, is Lily, is Lily in here? Lillian's been having this conversation with you guys long before I started, and I feel like I've been having it forever. So I, whether or not there's somebody in your face, because you guys are annoyed when someone's in your face, or not, the business community exists, so please just do a little bit better job reaching out to them. Sometimes people have more time. This is my one thing. So just one more thing. When Matt was president, I think Ken Laurel had an Afro. This is not, you guys have your hands full and we understand that, so if people aren't watching and paying attention to what goes on, you're gonna do what you have to do. And I, this is progress, it's a conversation moving in the right direction. I personally, I personally think you're kind of trying to gift-wrapt something before you have the package. But again, it is progress and I'd like to see the conversations continue, but if you're gonna do things like this, you have to be seeking the money that's out there. We are willing to partner with you to get the money into the town of Carmel, and this entire board basically shunned that. So shame on you for that. There's resources and let's tap into them and let's make our existing commerce districts, and even the ones that are not on Route 6, anything we can do to help the business community that we need to do. Thank you. One last thing. I apologize that I can't save the whole thing, but I've gotta get from home, so thank you, guys.
Okay, next speaker is Bill. Bill Nalk.
Hi, my name is Bill Nalk. I'm the president of the Putnam County Chambers of Commerce, and we represent the business community in Putnam County. And we've seen sign ordinances in other towns that have caused a great deal of consternation and trouble, and so I'm very happy to hear that this has become now an open conversation that hopefully will bear fruit in the future, and you'll come up with a good ordinance, you know, amenable to everybody. You know, I was somewhat concerned when I first read it, it read so that it was kind of already negative, just in an attitude. The term struck me right off the bat was, the colors will be muted. And it's just like, you're starting off trying to say, "Well, let's camouflage the signs so everything looks like it's not there." And the purpose of a sign is to attract people's attention, and it can be done in an appropriate way, and so we're asking you to change the attitude you're feeling, which you've already expressed, and be business-friendly. Let us, let us help you by helping us let people know that we're here. Also, some of the terminology was kind of contrary to some of modern technology. There's all kinds of things going. The use of LED now kind of bypasses some of the backlit signage, and it can be done appropriately, doesn't always have to be flashing. So, I mean, there's new technology, it needs to be accommodated in any new laws that you're gonna come up with, regulations, and I ask you to seriously consider the limitation of only ten percent of the window space in a building as being available for signage. There's just so many things that need to be expressed in the day-to-day business that can be put up with a simple poster in the window and gets people's attention without being garish or anything like that. So, number one, I commend you on opening up the conversation now and continuing it, and we definitely want to work with you to come up with a good and appropriate sign that'll let businesses do what they're doing, which is earning a living. Businesses aren't nonprofit operations, and when business is successful, then the rest of the community thrives. So we ask you to keep listening to us and we'll keep doing our best to bring our comments to you.
Okay, next speaker is Henry Boyd.
Hi, I'm Henry Boyd. I am the chairperson of the Carmel Kent Chamber of Commerce. We are a sister chamber to Mike Gucci. Mike didn't thought me as a sister, did you? But, thank you, Mike. What I would like to do is promote business in our community, and I've had a business here for forty-five years and in Putnam County, and I believe that some of this regulation they're trying to put on people is not a very good idea. Real quick, I'd like to just, you table this and sit down with the business people in the community, we can sit there and negotiate a better plan. That's what we need. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Dave Nicholas.
Well, I don't have any business in town, but I have a lot of tenants who do. I also have a lot of vacant spaces. The tenants I have are all either angry or they're certainly worried, and a lot of them are barely holding on. And I pretty much disagree with everything on here. I mean, this is no flags, ten percent of a window, no neon, where does it end? I don't have any problem with sandwich boards. I like them. I like knowing what that business has. And banner still. I mean, how are you gonna find Donna's Cafe if she doesn't have any signs there? Send me back. I mean, just about every commercial property is gonna be in violation of what you have already, let alone what you're gonna do. I mean, what are you gonna do with a gas station? They look like Times Square as it is. I mean, every time they change the price of gas every day, you're gonna make them get a new sign permit? Pretty much what they would have to do to comply, even with what you have now. So, I mean, you've got, what, twenty-five percent in town tax increases in the last four years? More when you compound it? Everybody's barely holding on. I've got properties that used to at least break even or make money, and now they're losing tens of thousands a year, and it's because of the taxes and the insurance and everything is going insane, and the rents can't because people can't pay them, and you're just cutting their legs out from under them. What you gotta do is stop spending and drop the taxes, if anything else. Commercial properties pay school taxes at an alarming rate and have no effect whatsoever on the school system, and you're just, you're just cutting their throats. It's time to change something and let people run business without, you know, Big Brother on their back every second. This fire inspection nonsense, I have buildings in other towns, in no other town around here that I have buildings and charging to inspect your building, except Carmel. And I guess the garbage thing is not on this one, it's the next public hearing later on? Or I've got something to say on that one, too.
Next speaker is Jack Tesler.
Can I think, right here, one big question for you. Going from $100 to $1,500 on the banners is just insanity. I understand also that there's fees, but the nonprofits are the heartbeat of this town. You can't, that just cannot. So, I forgot to say that, but that is, it just can't happen. I can see covering costs, but $1,500 is insane.
Jen, a question. What if it turned out that $1,500 was actually the cost?
Then why didn't you look at it years ago? So increase it in increments, do something else.
Absolutely. Actually, I have a much better suggestion. If it cost the town $1,500 to do it, we don't do it. We have designated areas on the sides of the road. People have natural intersections, stoplights, stop signs, and you have designated areas. Then we don't have to worry about $1,500 for nonprofit. We have set areas, we have set times, but this is all we gotta discuss. Because I'm looking forward to...
That's not saying any of that. You're not saying any of that in the code?
No, I know, but two and a half years ago, we met with, two and a half years ago when I met with Representative Mr. Trump, the Carmel Chamber, the Carmel Kent Chamber, and the Putnam County Chamber, and our ARB. Unfortunately, when the ARB was done, everything that we had worked on was done.
Oh, yeah. I can't even tell you how many, and you know, how many I... I can't even tell you how many, and you know, Tommy, I was, Lillian knows, and lots of other people, hundreds of my own personal hours, taken away from her and my other builder, talking about this stuff that we're going round and round and round. And yes, banners were one of them. And yes, you should cover costs. But it's not good business to go from $100 to $1,500 without any conversation of how they're gonna do it. We have Relay for Life coming up. We have lots of events coming up. Lots of events that count on that. So, just, you can't just rip the knees out from a lot of these people or whatever these people is. But I appreciate and understand what you're trying to do, but that's extreme. That's extreme.
But the costs actually did come out to just under $1,500.
Now, we're doing something wrong, because I'm, you know what?
You know what it is? It's actually not us, it's the application cost for the Department of Transportation.
Here's my suggestion for contract negotiations. Anybody that works for the town of Carmel should have to volunteer three days of their personal time to this town. The Pops, the volunteer fire department, anybody. They should have, that should be part of the contract negotiations. You wanna be a policeman of the town of Carmel, volunteer three days of your personal time. You wanna work for the highway department, volunteer, because the business community volunteers a ton of their time. I don't know what to tell you, but $1,500, because I've been there, and I think I've actually climbed the ladder to hang the banners. I have decorated this town for the holidays personally. So, if we can volunteer, volunteer our time so can the people that work here. I don't know what the solutions are, but $1,500 is yes. Thank you.
Mr. Tesler?
Good evening. Anyone wanna speak before I do? I've gotten a little older since I was in here. Good evening. My name is Jack Tesler, and I'm happy to say that I know quite a number of people that are here. And that's because my family and I have lived in Putnam County since 1965. I'm a resident for a long time. I am here speaking tonight as a tax-paying resident and as the father of a business owner on Route 6 in Carmel, Jen and Jerry's Deli. In the 50-year time span that my family and I have been here, we've seen the town grow and expand. Our population has grown. Our schools have grown and increased in number. And our business base has also grown. All these things have increased in degrees that are basically complementary to each other. There is not one thing that is just mushroomed. We are growing, and we are growing nicely and uniformly. The increase in business and schools necessitates the keeping up of people in the loop of what's going on, keeping everybody well-informed, telling them where things are, telling them how to get there, when things are happening. Among the things used to disseminate this information are signs, all kinds of signs, big signs, little signs, which tell us when the school sporting events are happening, when they should sign their kids up for certain sports and activities in the schools, where to find a legal office, a religious institution, a social service, a restaurant, or when to get your nails done. This, everything. This form of basically non-verbal communication seems to accomplish its goal very well. Now, we have examples all around us. 60 miles to the south, we have probably one of the biggest sign areas in the entire world. We have New York City. New businesses come into New York City, and the first thing they do is put up a sign. And they put up all kinds of signs. There's moving signs, flashing signs, neon signs, blinking signs, every other parking sign, every kind of sign that you can possibly imagine. I found the signage used by the purveyors of merchandise as well as services in this town to be well within the limits of communicating just their wares and actions and events to attempt to create a greater flow, a greater degree of business, and a greater degree of happiness in this town. The reduction or elimination of these signs would be very detrimental to our area, as would the prohibition or the placement of new ones in accordance with the rules already in progress here. Many people have told me that before they move here, the first thing that they do is drive around in the area. And they look for places like places of worship. Where am I going to have my family roots? Where am I going to communicate with people? They look for doctors, they look for lawyers, they look for real estate agents. They're not buying the newspapers here first. They're looking to move here. And they're looking for a place where they can find something that they actually need to use. The removal or limiting of signs would negatively impact the growth of the area, put a greater tax burden on existing businesses, and certainly homeowners, and be contrary to our desire to attract people. It might just as well be that I see signs up on trees saying, "Shop Putnam." You might as well put up signs saying, "Don't shop Putnam."
Okay, next speaker is Joe Tuck. Joe?
Mr. Tesler, you're very tough on it to call. Good evening, everybody. I've been living in this town for 27 years. I've had a business here for 24 years. I've been a proud member of the Chamber of Commerce for 22 years. Thank you, Charlie Melchman. I think the best outcome that can come from this meeting tonight is what Mike Bucci stated. We'd like to create a committee that will meet with several members of your town board so that we can discuss what has been presented. Initially, I was going to address six or seven or eight areas of this proposed amendment. Not gonna do that. I will highlight one or two, but I'm not gonna hit all seven. But I think that if the town board is open and the town council is open to having a meaningful discussion over how this amendment affects current business, future business, does it benefit the business? Is it a detriment to the business? Is it going to affect pre-existing signs? Is that addressed at all, Greg? It does? Okay. So, if it affects pre-existing signs, how many businesses in this town have invested in renovating their buildings? I bought my building 10 years ago, the Highland Market, 2004. I invested over $100,000 into the building to renovate the building. I purchased signs. Many businesses here purchase signs. What about the money they've invested? We're starting from scratch. Looking at the amendment, I just wanna highlight one area. Section 5, Chapter 156, subdivision A to C. And I know Bill Nalk mentioned this. "All colors shall be muted in nature," parentheses, "earth tones," and not brilliant. I'll wait till Frank starts. I'll read it again. "All colors shall be muted in nature." So, I actually thought about it, and I said, you know, what does muted mean? Muted means toned down. Muted means dulled down, subdued, softened. Then I looked up what's the definition of earth tones. Beige, sand, brown, dull, yellow. Then I thought for a moment. Rich DeAndrea from Park Ford is here. The Ford logo is blue. Dunkin' Donuts, I think their logo is pink and orange. Sunoco, bright blue and yellow. And the law offices of Joseph J. Tuck, bright green. This sign amendment is telling all those businesses to change colors, logos, and diminish the brightness of our signs. Why do we have signs? I have a sign on Route 6, so hopefully it'll attract attention. So, when people drive by, they'll say, oh, yeah, that's Tuck, that's the boy. That's why we all have signs, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Mr. Albano made a great point. There should be a comprehensive plan, and it appears to me there isn't. Beautification, that's something which I strongly fought for many years ago in the Chamber of Commerce. Many of us, I had me 15 years ago, put up flower boxes throughout the community. A small thing. It lasted for several years. Then it became useless garbage acceptables. Businesses didn't take care of it. Some did, some didn't. Marco and Jimmy Dean maintain theirs to this day. Those are the only two. I think there has to be communication. When I read this, and I saw muted in nature, earth tones, and then I heard the comment about New England Town, well, let me tell you. Mayapac is not Ridgefield. In Ridgefield, which is a New England town, or Richfield, that's a New England town. The town hub is walkable. You can walk to each and every storefront. Go to Ridgefield, start at that beautiful little candy shop, and you can walk all the way to that beautiful park they have. And there's public parking for everything, for the banks, the lawyers, the restaurants, the candy shop, and the park. We don't have that here. Our business, businesses, stretch from one end of Route 6 to the other, up 6N, down to 6 and up 52. We don't have people walking to our businesses. We need signs. We need appropriate signage. I'm suggesting to you, create a comprehensive plan. Don't cherry pick items and say, okay, paddle mountain. What he, what he read, if this town were to charge $1,500 to each nonprofit that puts a sign across Route 6, that's simply unconscionable. It's unconscionable for several reasons. The people that use those signs, Relay for Life, Freezing for a Reason, St. Patty's Day Parade, Columbus Day Parade, these are all not-for-profits. But it's not so much that they're not-for-profits. The people that organize those, they're all volunteers. Every single one of them are volunteers. They're not in it for the money. Those signs that are stretched across Route 6 are not financial considerations. It's to draw people in. The Patty's Day Parade, they ask the restaurant owners what that does to their budgets. They rely upon it, and they love it.
Actually, Joe, if you don't mind, I'm gonna interrupt you for a second, but this is probably great for everyone to know, since we're talking about communication. Talk about parades. Starting January 1st, 2016, this town board has every intention of starting to charge what the cost is for parades, or working out routes with our police department, working out routes with the organizations so that we have set structured things that will reduce our costs. But I want everyone to know right now, if you think that it's just at banners, we're evaluating every cost that this town has and figuring out what we can do to make this town run efficiently, productively, and we have to figure out how to do it the right way. So, this is why we have these conversations in public meetings, and I look forward to hopefully having you serve on that committee as well so we can pick you a break, because I know you have a lot of knowledge to gain.
If, if you charge a not-for-profit that is based upon volunteers, $1,500 to string up a sign, those not-for-profits will no longer have those events. If they no longer have those events, you're tearing the fabric of this community. Because the volunteers, think of how many people go to Relay for Life, go to Freezing for a Reason, go to these parades. It's hundreds, and that's what this community's all about. So, by diminishing what these not-for-profits are attempting to do, by charging them for signage across Route 6, in my opinion, is unconscionable. Lastly, everybody in this room wants business to thrive, okay? We want to be successful. We need our town board to support us to be successful. Because the more people that shop Putnam, the more people that shop Mayapac, shop Carmel, shop Kent, the better for our community, the better for our businesses, and actually, the better for our town. Thank you.
One quick thing that I forgot. And I know you guys...
Kenny, take my time on that.
I know you guys heard enough that you realize we have that dialogue. But if we ever use what's proposed here, I wanna tell you how the landscape of Route 6 would change. What you would have is a trail park of pickup trucks with billboards on them all over the town. That's what you would have if you knew of signage.
Okay, Kevin?
Kevin Bailey, former president of Mayapac Chamber. I promise, there's a couple of presidents here tonight, but I happen to be the best-looking one, so... First of all, thank you very much for opening the meeting, keeping it open. I know you will work on it. Some of those, not the ones that are in the, the law that's in place now, was with the input of the Mayapac Chamber about 20 years ago. And Jonathan, you're right. The best time that we had in, it was a liaison to the town, was when you left, it was about seven years ago. So, shame on us, it's a shame for not keeping that going and having a representative here all the way through so we can always be with the input. The only thing I would really like to touch on, because you're keeping this open, I wanna be redundant, is the issue of the signs with the A-frames. I think that's probably the most important for most members as they're driving along Route 6, because people drive, and they look for the signs. Anyone does. And a lot of the people that are store owners here, besides being owners here, they're also residents here. So, they pay double taxation. They pay for their businesses, they pay for their homes, and there are the properties that they have. For signs, I think that we should have these signs with no fees attached to any of these businesses. They're trying to make a living, and to sometimes, July weekend is their best weekend. Sometimes, February 14th, their best day. Great. You shouldn't be burning them with additional money on the signs. It leads into that path as we do. I think that lots of the businesses are hurting if you just get by the skin of the deer. I don't think it should be a revenue source. I think it's something that you should automatically give them four times a year, six times a year, five days a week, take it down to the end of the year. I think they could use the help as much as possible, particularly now. Mike mentioned that the recession is over. This is, I don't know, for small businesses. Hopefully, it is. But if you look at when the committee is put together, it looks like you are going to do that. Appreciate that very much. I think the signs for small businesses, which is a lifeblood of our community, we don't have the big stores in our, in our area. I think you gotta help them. Reach out to them and say, what do you need help bringing businesses? And I think you can receive the signs if you're willing to support this. So, I appreciate that very much. If anyone, like, no. If, if anyone's here early, they were all like, Mike Morelli sold a piece of property that's five and eight, $7,000 or five and eight million dollars. When I move and retire to Florida, I want him to sell my house.
You have to be the city of New York.
Okay, next is Rich DeAndrea. Rich?
Yeah, Rich DeAndrea, I own Park Ford on Route 6. I wanna just start off by going back to some of the earlier comments that John had with Mike Morelli. When you look at everything, it all falls down to taxes. What's the, what's the impact on, on the residents that live here? What's the impact on the businesses? If I was sitting in your positions, and I, I, I know the job you're doing is a very tough one, but I'd be looking to do everything I possibly could to be business friendly. And you say that, Kenny, but I really don't think, any of us really know what business friendly really means. Because we do have vacant properties. We do have infrastructure that needs big attention. You're not gonna, you're not gonna get people to invest in properties and spend the kind of money that it takes to upgrade and facilitate a new building or an old one without town water, without town sewer. without town water, without town sewer, without sidewalks, streetlights, things that we need. We're picking at, at the, at the sign code, and maybe that's the right thing to start, but we really need to look at what that sign code does. Our residents are the ones that have the vested interest in that sign code. And the businesses are here tonight, but it's our residents that are going to be affected. Why? Just in two thousand and fourteen, I collected one million, three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in state sales taxes. Sixty percent of it went to Putnam. If I could tell you tomorrow I could open up a business and have you be town-friendly to let me do that, have a brand sign that, I don't tell it, I don't tell you what kind of brand sign I want, Ford's going to company, tell them what kind of brand sign I had to have. Without it, I don't have a business. If you wanted to have a business that could hire forty employees, pay two-point-two million in salaries to those employees, that buy goods and services, pay taxes, send their kids to schools, you'd want a business like mine. Thank you. That I collect, and lessen the burden on our residents. If I could attract another business that had maybe a corporate sign, every corporate sign is over twenty percent of the sign face, my Ford sign was a hundred percent of the sign face, so that, that, that part of that code's got to be addressed. But we need to look at attracting businesses. To be business-friendly means opening up the doors, to really looking at what it takes to fill the properties, and look at businesses that do collect sales taxes, and maybe tax and businesses that pay six-figure property taxes that I do. So those are the things that are important. If there's anything in here that's negative to friendly business, that's got to be addressed. Aesthetics is everything. We all want this, this town to look great. But it starts with, again, that major plan, tax incentives to make it reface buildings, have that review board that does start putting some colors and some flavors into some treatments on buildings into place. There's a lot of things we can do. And yeah, shame on us for not being here, and you opened up all our eyes tonight, it's probably the best meeting that maybe you could have had, and maybe take the sign code and maybe bring us out, and Mike's been preaching us to come out for, for years. So I applaud the fact that we're all here tonight, and we've got to stay with it. But I think, again, attracting businesses, that can pay taxes, and collect sales taxes, that's what I'd be looking to do.
Rich, can I just, so, what was the number that you said for the sales tax that went to Putnam County?
Six hundred and twenty thousand.
Do you know how much of that comes back to the town of Carmel? It's very easy. No, no, no. I made it once, you can make it. And again, I'm, I'm with what you're saying. I believe, what I'm saying is, after we've done with this issue, maybe Chamber could help us. You know how much of that sales tax money comes back to the town of Carmel? That does the infrastructure, that does the manning of police of your stores, how much of that comes back to the town of Carmel? I'm going to tell you, it's very easy, zero. Zero dollars, zero sales tax dollars come back to Carmel. So it's, it's, it's the red. But, but Putnam County, Putnam County does not share the sales. Wait, wait. I, I think, we're on the same page. What I'm, what I'm asking is that, we've talked about this year after year about the sales tax, because we're the ones who are creating the, um, the committees, you know, a lot of the development is coming through the town, right, through the planning board, et cetera, et cetera. Our policemen are patrolling, you know, your streets, our streets, and, and we're doing, Mike Simone's doing the roadwork on the streets that your customers are using. So it would be, it would behoove all of us, I guess, after we've finished with this, maybe the Chamber could help us go to the county and say, "You know what? Rich DeAndrea, Park Ford gives six hundred thousand dollars to Putnam County for their sales tax. How much of that is coming to pave the side, the road in front of your store?" None.
That's a shame.
And, and maybe we can work on that together, because I think, even if we were to get one percent of that, of all the total sales tax revenue that just the town of Carmel generates to Putnam County, there wouldn't be a tax increase.
Well, I'm sure voters would be behind that one, so.
Well, what we're asking for is, you know, we could say it, the five of us continue to say year after year after year, but if you don't go, if we filled the county building with all these people, and, and Carmel's here, I think they'd listen. So we're not asking for all of it back, but even if you got a percentage back to the town of Carmel from the taxes that we collect, that Park Ford, that Bill Geron collects and gives to county, it would be, John, I, I mean, you did the numbers recently, our tax increases would be in the interest.
Right. Is that just saving for every town?
Yes.
In Putnam County, yes. In Putnam County, yes. How about in other counties?
No.
No, they, it's shared. But let's, just bear with me one second.
Let's not get overtracked. This is a whole other, this is a whole other discussion, all of the counties. We probably, not that I disagree.
You wave the flag, I think you'll get us out there, you know? Probably we need to know.
That's exactly the key. We, we need help, we need you guys to help us, we need you guys to help Putnam County. We, as I said at the very beginning, we're all in this together. Everyone's talking here about the, the, the flow of money, the interconnectedness of businesses, of residents coming in, residents need a place to, to go. We also talked about the two percent cap last time, and made you getting a credit. And I just want to put things in perspective. We achieved a two percent cap, and there's a goal to achieve it again, to give the, correct, give the residents a thousand dollars. You could almost assume the triple down economics. You give the residents a thousand dollars, they're going to go out for dinner more, they're going to go to the deli more, they're going to get their nails done more, they're going to cook, they're going to buy a dress, et cetera. It's triple down economics. Ladies and gentlemen, we achieved the four, the two percent cap last year by four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We have a twenty-five million dollar townwide budget excluding the special districts. We achieved the cap by the hair of our chinny-chin chin. Okay, we're talking millions, and we just achieved it by four hundred dollars. Now, so put that in perspective when, when you're talking about sales tax, and friends saying, "Let's go to the county and just give us a fraction." We're not saying give it all, give us a fraction. Now, guess what? We don't have to fight with the police to, to, to say we're going to light people up, we don't have to say we're not going to achieve the two percent cap. I, I mean, guys, we don't have to borrow to pave the roads, this is what I said before, it's all connected. And we've done the Putnam County legislation and, and the executive, and we need, we are the biggest voting block, we have four and a half or five of nine legislations, I'm sorry that call left. We need a voice. This is a wonderful voice. Look, as Mr. Borelli's been saying, we need a voice for more things. Mr. Toc just mentioned that, that draws on for the banners. I kind of agree with him, but guys, we just made the cap by four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So if we don't, like Jonathan's saying, think of ways to get reimbursements of activities. I think the community's wonderful. And if we start charging for parades and events, it does diminish the community, but, but, but guys, if we don't, and overtime for the highway department or the police keep going up and up and up, we don't achieve the cap, then more people are pissed at us, and then they're not going to, you know, be going. Your tax dollars, double taxation, like Kevin Bailey said, to the residents and, and for the, for the businesses. We need to work together, we need a voice. We have to, by all means, start communicating, we have to get this committee going, we have to have a voice.